To what is it?
To the board.
All cats, all cats.
What was that?
Hogenis got split at one point about a million years ago into two. One of which was the.
He doesn't hear so well. Okay, I'm gonna bring the Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two Milton Planning Board meeting to order. We've got full board, Bob's the only one that's not in. Larry, you wanna fill in for Bob?
Brian.
Come on, Brian. Brian, Brian.
I think Ryan, Ryan may have forgotten.
What?
I passed his trucks, I was sitting in the driveway.
Oh, did you see it?
I'll give a shot, he comes, I get kicked off.
Okay, alright. I'll open up the public comment.
Crickets.
Seeing there is none, I'll close public comment and review and approval of minutes of nine, six, twenty, twenty-two.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
How was in favor? Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Like you're pretty cool.
I'm gonna do it, do it, hey?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Let's see, on the fourth in the agenda is discussion on revisions of existing zoning ordinance, Article five, six, open space development, and review or graph new open space development language. Bruce, you wanna get us started on this?
Yeah, I can give you a recap from our last meeting. Uh, we did go, maybe two meetings ago, we started talking about, uh, issues that, uh, had cropped up about Article six, which is the open space development article in the zoning ordinance. Uh, and, uh, what I told the board was that I would, I would take a stab at either listing the deficiencies and issues, and possibly some errors. But what I did was I took that a step further and I actually prepared a revised draft of Article six. And I thought would have taken care of most of the issues, but again, this requires discussion by board. At the last meeting, I told you that, at the last meeting, I told you that I would try to prepare some draft language that was predicated on other towns' open space development regulations. Now, I haven't done that, but what I did do is I have given you, uh, and this is in section four of your binders, I've given you four examples of small town open space development. So the first thing you see in your binder is the revised, uh, Article six with revisions being with new language in red and, uh, struck language in cross-out. The next thing you will see is the first example, which by the way, happens to be the simplest. Unless you ask me, I'm not gonna tell you, the community of Chum might be able to figure it out. So the first one is really an email, but what it does is it lays out multifamily and cluster development. And there's only, uh, it's only like a page and a quarter. Uh, they pack a lot into that. And the second one, oh here, the second one is a couple pages later. This one is, uh, one small town's, I guess you can see at the bottom of town it is, it's Fremont. It's Fremont's, uh, it's kind of a, what would you call it?
Cliff notes. Kind of like cliff notes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a summary of, I was trying to think of a different word, but it doesn't come out. Uh, this is their open space preservation development, that's, that's their Article eighteen in their zoning ordinance. So it does many of the things that ours does, you can take a look at that. Uh, the third one is Mont Vernon's. This is right out, this is right out of their zoning. This one is about five pages long. And the last one is a, is an open space development ordinance, obviously it's also in the zoning ordinance. Remembering what town it's from, so there are four examples. Here, here are some takeaways, we can take a look at each one individually if you wish. Takeaways are this, that the devil is always in the details, but looking at it from ten thousand feet up, each one of these, with the exception of the first one, was taken from an original template prepared by some regional planning commission. Where they took the template and then they molded it to their community. They're not all the same, some of them, some of them do allow multifamily use, some don't. But they're all very similar. The question I wanna pose to the board tonight is this, after you take a couple minutes and take a look at these, I want you to consider whether or not we should throw the baby out with the bathwater on our own Article six with fixes and go with new language. Looking at these, they're all pretty good. No matter what, there's parts of each one of them that has to be changed to meet the needs of Milton and what our master plan says. And to be in tune with our zoning ordinance land use regulations, so. I think I've said it. I think that's what I'm, I'm looking for a discussion after you review these four examples about whether you, A, wanna move forward with preparing a complete new open space development ordinance, or whether you feel more comfortable with continuing to tweak, as you know, we've already started, the revisions of the fixes required in our own Article six open space development ordinance. Looking at the first one, looking at the first one, which is an email I sent to all of you, the first thing that hits you is that the total number of units can't exceed what's already allowed in the underlying zoning ordinance. So there's no, there's no incentive, there's no incentive for a developer to do this. And that's the bottom line on this one, it's very simple. This one does allow multifamily dwelling units if approved by the planning board and if it has municipal sewer. Another thing that strikes you about this one is that the, that the total area for the developed portion of a lot, that means you know, the dwellings, structures, accessory structures, and the parking required for all of that, cannot exceed thirty percent of the total area of the lot. So the rest of the lot has to be that common open space. So that's the first one. The second one, uh, which I, again, is Fremont, talks about the same kind of thing, that the overall density allowed can be no greater than a conventional subdivision. And the only thing that they're allowing is, one, that the dwelling units can be put closer together and that you can have reduced lot sizes. However, this one does allow greater than duplexes, townhouses, as long as the lot is greater than twelve acres. The open space standard here, of course, is that, uh, here in Fremont, fifty percent of an upland portion has to be kept as common open space. And it gets a little more complicated with that, both soils and slopes, less than fifteen percent. Uh, but that's the, uh, that's the meat of this one. The third one is, uh, is Mont Vernon, and if you look at the first page about, uh, in section I three oh five point three B, the, the density is determined by dividing the net tract area, and I, I assume by that they mean, and probably says somewhere else, uh, that you don't include the wetlands or steep slopes in that, to get to the net tract area, by the minimum lot size for the zoning district in which this facility lies. So really what they're saying is that the, the density of the development can't be any greater than what's already allowed by the zoning ordinance in the underlying zoning district. So there's no, again, there, every, every one of these, so far, these first three, they're not making any kind of an incentive for a developer to do this, other than the fact that it costs a little bit less for them to put in roads and parking areas when you make the space more compact for the tract area. That's a little different than ours. Our density in our Article six is based on a yield plan where the developer proves to you that they can get X number of lots, you know, taking into account the wetlands and the steep slopes and and any other, you know, derogatory aspect of the land for development. That then translates into the number of units that you can have. Obviously, in the underlying district in Milton, uh, for most of Milton, you can have duplexes. So every lot, that's two, that's two, two units, that's the way it is in Article six today. What is it? Some of the last one, now, I wanted to see what, what percent they had there. Okay, so, again, in Mont Vernon's, it's forty percent of the net tract area has to be set aside for common open space. Only one of them, uh, did I see that they would require a buffer of any kind. Unless someone tells me that I'm not reading it right. And that's this one here, the Mont Vernon one, uh, on page eleven, talks about a landscape buffer sufficient to provide division of transition between uses shall be provided within the required setbacks. To conserve the natural and scenic environment, no case, shall the width of the buffer be less than the setbacks otherwise required in that district. So all they're saying is the buffer's gotta be the setback in that particular zoning district, and it has to be landscaped. Landscaped and sufficient to provide division of, between uses. I don't really know what that language means, but if I was the zoning administrator, I'd interpret it a certain way. Uh, the last one again is Greenfield. Sounds like a song. Uh, you know, they've all got the same purpose. Let me see what Greenfield says. Greenfield talks about the fact that the minimum size for open space development is twenty acres, which is the same as our Article six. Shall be a continuous one hundred feet. And they talk about how all rights away gotta be at least sixty feet in length, width, sorry. Need to know about Greenfield. Forty percent, again, of the net developable area must be dedicated to open space. And the only thing about Greenfield is that they're very picky about specific requirements. For frontage, setbacks, you'll find that on the next to the last page, are the setbacks and other dimensions. Then maximum number of dwelling units, again, calculated by dividing the net developable area uh, by the minimum permissible acreage per dwelling unit of the underlying district, rounded down to the nearest whole number.
Mr. Chairman. You'll get a you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Might I, might I note that Ryan is here and I'm, I'm down in Old Kitten. And your book is buried behind the high back chair.
You can sit up here too. And with that, I'm gonna shut up for a while while you guys talk about this issue. And it really does boil down to whether or not we move forward with fixing the existing language in Article six that we already have, and I think it's fixable. Or we do more research into these and others, but I'm gonna tell you that really, they're, they're all based on an original template done either by OSP or by some regional planning commission.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Larry, the flag's in the way, I can't see it.
Oh. That's what happens when you wrap yourself in the flag. The, uh, page twenty of our open space development is still a, a nice review of the, of the goals of open space development. And what doesn't come across in the discussions is, uh, even if you include a quadruplex, four, four families, uh, there's nothing that specifies the probable population density for that particular tract of what they're planning. And if, uh, if you're trying to maintain, to minimize the impact of development, uh, preserve the areas of the town, maintain rural character, uh, if you have a development which can have a duplex with six bedrooms each, what does that do for open space development and the impact on the, on physical land resource?
This is a question to me.
Turn on the first page, page one.
Well, and the, in the zoning ordinance itself is, is page twenty, but on your, on your revised one is page one. So the answer really is this, unless you were to put a bedroom limit in the ordinance, there really is no way to talk about population density. You're gonna know about unit density, you're gonna, you are gonna know with our ordinance that they can't, the developer can't put more units than he or she could get by putting a conventional subdivision onto that tract of land. And that's done by, it talks, talks about it in here about the, uh, the yield plan. I'm not sure if we call it a yield plan, but I always have, because you really are showing, I can get fifteen lots here. And I'm proving it to the planning board with the yield plan, developed by a surveyor, identifying wetlands and steep slopes. Making sure that you can get access to those fifteen lots. And then, the developer says, since I can get fifteen lots, I'm in a low-density zoning district, I can have a duplex on each lot, that means that I can have thirty units. One of the problems with Article six is that it's not, the way it's written, it's not clear to me whether this ends up open space lot and one other lot, or an open space lot and fifteen other lots, the duplexes? You follow what I'm getting at? Ours does say that fifty percent of that tract has to be kept in open space. And then you put all the, all of the built environment on that other fifty percent somehow, including access roads. So what does it do? It helps the environment, it helps natural resources. It assists a developer in reducing costs in the, in the development of that, development of development. But I'm not asking you a question, because unless you put this, each unit shall have only two bedrooms, which you could do, then you're never gonna know. You know, unless through the planning board process, through submittal, how many of these are two bedrooms, Mister Developer? Well, ten of them are two bedrooms and five of them are three bedrooms. And ten of them are one bedroom, then you'd know. So I mean, this, this can be taken care of through the subdivision process. When an application comes before you, and I think we have a little bit of experience with that. Do you need to put it into the Article six, I think, really, is your question?
One, one more and I will, I will be quiet. Uh, years ago, down in Barrington, there was a town map that showed a road in place to service behind Caleb's store going out toward the, the post office and the rest, which was an intentional forward planning of the town of Barrington to control where they wanted, uh, streets and, and development. Can we ever put together a list of parcels which would fit in with, we'll use page one, down in G, uh, creating a continually protected continuous network of open spaces? So that a developer developing, we have parcel A, B, and C, so that the developer of parcel C, who does this work first, is in sync with the probable open space that would be in parcel B. That's, that's what I would see as planning open space. Is that part of this discussion? Sure?
Karen. Uh, and can I just make a, a couple of points? I think, I, I've read through all of the examples that you provided, um, earlier this morning. And, uh, just my, my opinion is, I think you've done a fantastic job modifying our Article six and comparing the modified version of our Article six to the other ones. I think ours is, is ten, far superior to the other, the examples that you've provided. But that's just my opinion. But the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, back to, to Larry's concern, um, I saw, and I think it was Greenfield's, is it? Under their purpose, they have one that says maintains the traditional New England rural character and land use pattern in which small villages contrast with open space and farmlands. But I, I did also wanna get back to, um, I think, opening up the, a discussion of, of everyone and getting their thoughts on, I think this Article six is, is an opportunity for us to work with a developer to, you know, give them some leeway, but also, you know, allows us to let them know what our expectations are for, you know, this special open space development. And, um, I, I did wanna also have a discussion regarding, um, I know, like, the town of Wakeville, I brought it up last time, but, um, I didn't make appropriate points, but I wanted to make some points um, today on actually defining the type of style home that we would, you know, expect, or, or would, would, I'm trying to find a word, um, but anyways, that we would prefer for this particular type development. And the reason I say that is because it's gonna be a cluster type development. I think we have to be cognizant on, you know, careful as to what we allow, because they're gonna be closer together. We don't want a lot of flat roof type buildings. And I think we're allowed to do that, just for this particular, particular, um, article. But I also wanted to mention that, and I think it was brought up, that, you know, well, we should, you know, allow, um, the coded officer to define the style, um, or something like that. And I was thinking about it afterwards, and, and I was thinking that, you know, that's actually a disservice, I think, to the code officer. And I think it's also opens us, us up to, like, a dangerous precedent, because, you know, Brian might have one, you know, thought in his head on what's an acceptable style, but he might go on vacation and then somebody step in and have a different style and approve, you know, that. But then at some point, you know, Brian's gonna be, you know, five years from now, ten years from now, maybe, a new code officer, that's a lot, lot of responsibility. I really think it should be in the article with the understanding that we can make exceptions. But at least it's a starting point and the article can speak for itself, and it's a resource for the code officer. Uh, because my concern is if you have, you know, let's say code officer A disapproves a style, and then code officer B comes in and they approve that style, the people who got disapproved are gonna say, wait a minute, you know, he said I couldn't have it, but this guy said I could, you know, all of a sudden you got a lawsuit. But at least if it's defined in the article where we're allowed to make exceptions, if somebody, you know, brings a, a case to us, you know, at least it's there, it's in paper, it's in black and white. That anyone who wants to submit an application for an open space development knows what the expectations are upfront. And it's not the responsibility of just one person. So I just, I wanted to bring that up, I know Wakeville has it, I've got it here. But that's just my thought. And I wanted to just bring it up for discussion again.
Well, I don't think a code officer will wanna take that responsibility.
And that's, you know.
It's entirely up to you people, not me, you tell me what you want me to do.
And, and, and I know this is a special article and I'm, you know.
I appreciate that, I wouldn't make that decision. Paul.
So when they, when they presented their plan to the planning board, we would know what kind of buildings they were and approve or disapprove accordingly, correct? They'd have to have it approved by the planning board, what the structures would be, I mean, if they gotta put. if they gotta put forty, you know, those shipping containers that they're turning into houses now, I think we would know that and be like, no. You know, I don't think that's.
That's exactly the same answer I gave to Larry.
Right.
About during your review process on a given application, it's your, it's your responsibility to seek out information about how they're gonna be built, what they're gonna look like. That's why you ask for elevation views. Now, Karen is right, you can put, you can put some architectural standards in this because it is, you rely on that RSA 67421, which is very, that's the special land use thing. The planning board gets kinda more authority and it, it's overarching on top of the zoning ordinance. So you can add architectural requirements. I mean, I would, I agree that New England character is important. And what does that mean? It means that you're not gonna build a flat-roofed building that was, that might fit in Rochester's downtown, in Milton, not in the Village. If you understand what I'm getting at. You are gonna have a house that has a 612 roof. And you might wanna say that. Say, yes, New England character, that's what we want, but specifically we want this and this. But I wouldn't get too deep into it. That's kind of, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at is because there's a fine line between these types of land use regulations telling people how to build things and weight to specifically, you know, that your, that your dwelling has to have twenty-five hundred square feet and you must have a garage and you must paint this building this color and it must have a 612 roof. Well, some of those are reasonable, I think, because, you know, we, we don't want this to change, we don't want this community to change, we want it to still look like it looked, kinda forever.
I guess that was kinda my point is, houses that built not even fifteen years ago look different than houses that are built now. They're more efficient, they're more, you know, they're more electrical friendly, all this kinda stuff. And if you say you build it this, this, and this, that may limit future development and future technology advancements on what people are building here. So I just, I, I just, I wanna keep it.
And I, and I agree with you. And I don't, you know, I, I totally agree with you. I don't think we wanna make it as, so strict that, you know, you have to do a checklist, you know, and I'm just saying that we should, you know, do it at a very high level so that, you know, a developer or whomever knows the type of building, New England type building. I know this particular one, they do get into the pitch. They, whatever it says, what is this? If you want me to read it, I will, but.
And that's probably for Snowload or something like that, you know.
It could be the, it could be Greenfield.
This is not, this is not from your examples.
Oh, okay.
So it says the dwelling unit shall include, and again, I don't agree with this, but whatever, a full basement and poured foundation, concrete floor, reflect the town's historic New England building character, and have a minimum roof pitch of five, five feet rise for every twelve feet in length for the main roof area.
Five twelve. It's a five twelve pitch.
Five twelve.
Yeah.
But I mean, but I think the two important things is New England building type character.
And you can also refer, it shall have a pitched roof. Don't give it specific, but they have, they will have to have a decent pitch to Snowload.
What is a decent pitch though? Cause I know some recent examples.
That's the discretion of the building.
You know.
It depends on what they're using for roofing materials, it goes on and on and on. I mean, they can get by with a two pitch, but I mean, they're gonna have probably two by fourteen rafters.
What if they had a point five pitch?
Wouldn't be allowed, wouldn't shed snow. And your Snowload and Gracie takes seventy pounds and that's gonna support seventy pounds of snow.
Can you add in like a minimum that you would want it, like a minimum pitch? Is that so too much?
You could.
Just so we don't, just so we don't get a, an actual flat roof building.
And, and anything can be designed to support. But if you want a pitched roof, don't, don't be specific, pitch roof required. Let them come to you and say, that's not what we had in mind. This is not what we feel we should do. It doesn't fit the character. It's not gonna shed snow.
Five, five twelve butterfly.
So I'm gonna go on the other side of it and I'm just not comfortable with telling people what they can and can't build for their house. I mean, as, as long as it meets code and codes for the, for the state and for the town, that's okay. I, I'm not comfortable with telling people the style of the house that they can have.
Jonathan.
Bruce, the Greenfield example says clearly that the residents, you'll be like a condo, they have a mandatory home association and they're gonna own and manage the, the open spaces created around them, okay? The Milton example, it makes a mention of a homeowners association. Was it saying here what, the same thing that the Greenfield does? What is, I, I didn't see in here what it says the homeowners association's gonna do.
It, it really, it really doesn't, but what it says is that the homeowners association's legal documents shall be reviewed by the town attorney. That's what our Article Six says. So it's a roundabout way of saying, you gotta do it. It doesn't come out and say, like this one does, mandatory homeowners association shall mean a private non-profit corporation association, I don't know. On C two here in the Greenfields. But down at the bottom, it says that those articles of association must be acceptable to the planning board and by the town council and any other municipal, county, state agency, body, commissioner, department required by law to approve the same.
I'm just uncomfortable with, well, okay, I just see what you're saying, that's all right. But that whole last page is talking about the town's, may get stuck with this property and, and it may go to a conservation, you know, I just, I think, look, it's not a, it's not a public property. It's, it's the open space that belongs to the, the homeowners association and I'm happy with that. I don't think we should give them an out that they can give it to somebody else or, or transfer it to somebody else or.
Well, if you read those four examples, one of them says, one of them says that you could do either thing, but we prefer this. One of them says it's gotta be, it has to be stewarded by, I don't know, I don't know what it says, but it's, but one of them doesn't say, hey, look, the, the people who own these lots or dwelling units, or how are you gonna set it up, own the open space.
Right, I, I prefer that myself. I prefer that to be in there somewhere saying clearly.
See, that's an open question.
So these people are buying the property, so they're gonna be shareholders with their land around there and it's not public property, but it's their individual to deal with and I wanna keep the town out of it managing that property or anything else that comes up to it. Ryan.
So my takeaway from this is that there are some real good nuggets to take away from just these four examples, maybe three. And, I mean, I was just looking at it myself. Again, going back to the Greenfield, on the first page under B general, I think that we could add something like that to Article Six and I think it's very, we may have run into this in the past. It talks about the fact that, one, the, why, why are we doing this? Why, why would a developer do it? What does it do? And what, and what is the intent? But then it goes on to say that since every tract of land that's eligible for open space development is unique and different, that with different limitations, that it really does fall on the planning board to make that consideration and it's a collaborative effort between the developer and the planning board. In other words, the developer should hear what the planning board's saying and vice versa. And if that doesn't happen, then they're in big trouble. So that's a, that, that is a good thing to say. So my point is that there's nuggets here that we can pull out. One of which is what John just talked about, is, is the idea that you, you decide who is gonna steward and or own the open space.
And, well, but, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That when you go to page one ninety-five in our, in the White Book, we find that no project shall be deemed a condominium within the meaning of this chapter unless the undivided interests in the common area are vested in the New England.
Right. And I guess my point is that the, we're not telling the developer and then the prospective future owners what the ownership form has to be. You can have a homeowners association without it being a condominium. It's just a form of ownership. So, so I don't believe in our Article Six, we say, hey, this has gotta be a condominium because we don't. We do say that there has to be a homeowners association.
For the open space.
Well, for the open space and for other considerations such as maintenance and upkeep of infrastructure, access roads, stormwater infrastructure, and other things like that. That's, we were on the cusp of getting that done in the last application that came before us. The developer chose the condominium where to go and it's not mandated in, in our ordinance, Article Six at all. That's why the ownership issue of the open space is not set in stone, that's all I'm saying.
There, there are six hundred shingles on this roof, I'm only responsible for three hundred of them.
There's a difference, there's a difference though between open space, the open space and common areas if it's a condo type setup.
I believe you're right.
So I think we're talking about the open space. And the preference is for it to be in a conservation easement or open space not used for any, you know, whatever the wording is, I think we even have it here, but that it's for, in perpetuity, you know, it, it's, it's an open space that cannot be developed. But ownership can be different depending on if you have a conservation easement versus, you know, if it's just gonna be held as open land. So there's a big, huge difference in those two approaches.
I'm happy with the, with the homeowners association, you know, owning the, the open area, cause what'll happen is, by, by deed restriction, okay, that's what I'm doing. Because what'll happen is if something happens in the open area, one of those owners is gonna be upset about it and that's the person that's gonna sue the association. And that keeps the town out of it, that keeps the conservation out of it, you know, and that's open land, but I think it should be, again, managed by the, and owned in part by the homeowners that buy into this whole scheme, yep.
And yes, and the conservation committee talked about it and the very least approach would be for A, the town to own the land, the conservation committee to own the land. If you're gonna go easement, the preference would be to have a, a land trust own it or do the easement and have the homeowners own it. Cause otherwise, if you have the town involved at all and there are encumbrance, all of a sudden you've got a legal battle between the homeowners and the town. You know, so it's definitely questions that really need to be asked and answered during the application process.
Ryan.
So not going all the details of the different easements and options here, but one thing that I would hate to see happen is if we put a restriction on it that that has to happen and let's say there is a big piece of land that has to go with this development that's gonna go into this open space and it's a budding, another piece that's already maybe in conservation and there's walking trails on it or something and now there's another fifty acres that could be added to this and additional trails or some sort of thing for the community. So are we blocking that option out by making that mandatory in here that the homeowner association or whatever the association owns it? I would just hate to see us lose an opportunity for something like that. I get it, we don't wanna, we're ourselves in a position where it's gonna be a problem or a liability for the town, but I think we need to think outside the box a little bit and think that there could be a piece of property that, that, that open space may be a huge benefit to the town for recreation or, or something else.
And, and you, you, you know, if it were to be put, owned by the homeowners association and put into a conservation easement held by a third, a third-party land trust, most easements include the wording that public access is allowed. So.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is isn't, by leaving it open, doesn't it leave it up to the planning board at that time when we're reviewing the open space development to, to make that decision and maybe the planning board can, can, and, and the developer could come to a general agreement, okay, look, we want this land to be used for this instead of just owned by the people in that.
Paul. I kinda understand what you're saying. Like what if there's an association that gets turned in, over to the association, but they don't want it to go to a land trust, they want it strictly for the sole use of the association? And then everybody, the trails on this side, this side, no longer have access to that area. It's if it's turned over to the association, they can do whatever they want with it. It's the association land, they can, you can't force them to allow the public in if they don't want that, if it's part of the association. That's why it's kinda, I'd like to limit what you force people to do with their association.
Well, I mean, if you look at page seven of the, of the draft, or, document, page seven talks about protection and management of the open space. And it's, it starts out right away and this might give you the answer to this discussion. At the applicant's option, subject to approval by the planning board, all areas to be protected as open space shall be A, B, or C. And that's, that's how this is written because what it says is, A is conveyed to the town to be placed under the care, custody, and control of the conservation commission and be accepted by it for use as a park or open space use, and conveyed to the town shall be open for public use and/or conveyed to a non-profit organization, the principal purpose of which is the conservation or preservation of open space with a conservation restriction as specified in paragraph three below, I don't know where three is, it probably needs to be C. Such organizations shall be acceptable to the town as a bona fide conservation organization and again, and/or conveyed to a corporation or trust or to be owned by the owners of lots or residential units within the development, i.e. homeowners association, and placed under conservation restriction. If such a corporation or trust is used, as indicated herein, ownership thereof shall pass with the conveyance of the lots or residential units. The developer is responsible for the maintenance of the open space and other facilities to be held in common until such time as the homeowners association can assume such responsibility. Thereafter, the members of the association shall share the cost of maintaining the open space. Planning board shall require the applicant-proide documentation that membership in the homeowners association is mandatory in such association that has been established prior to the conveyance of any such lots. Really, it's giving this, the options of doing those things and the control is that the planning board has to see the legal documentation that establishes all of it.
Yeah, cause the and slash or, I mean, if, if you say or C, C is basically what we just discussed. C says it's gonna be turned over to the association, they can do, restrict what they want.
We're not saying it has to happen, we're saying any of those three things, or, or more than one.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I love words. One of my favorites for zoning is abrogate, which means you, you chip away. you deny or ignore. And no future vote of a homeowners' association can abrogate the terms and conditions of its approval or state statute.
That's true, and that's why there's two documents. The art of create the homeowners' association can't be changed. And then there's the homeowners' association rules and regulations that can be changed, so. We're cool if our legal counsel says these two documents pass muster. And that's in here, it's clear, it's not in the same place. It's somewhere. I'm sure that very specific answer when I said somewhere.
Could I just?
Karen.
Can I just ask you a question, Bruce, when you're ready?
Oh, legal review, it's on page three, thanks, thanks Karen.
So the question I had, getting back to the open space. The very last statement, E, monitoring of the open space, says the applicant should provide sufficient funds to the town. That's saying it's optional.
Where are you?
Page seven.
Page seven, the very last thing. E, monitoring of the open space. The applicant should provide sufficient funds to the town, which shall be placed in a designated escrow account for the purpose of the town's monitoring of the open space.
I agree, that should say "shall."
Okay, thank you. And "shall," because it can get pretty expensive to monitor these open spaces. That's where a lot of the-
Part of the cost of living there.
What's that?
It would become part of the cost of living there. And that monitoring requirement has to be in the, in the homeowners' association articles of approval, that this is what you'll take care of. This is a big thing, so just to expand on that. The planning board has to ensure that the homeowners' association docs give you what you want, give you what you need, give you what this says. So homeowners' association, once it takes over, takes over maintenance and responsibility for upkeep, upkeep, maintenance, and rebuild, I guess. Of everything from roadways to stormwater infrastructure that helps keep the water clean to the monitoring of the open space. So they've got to know upfront, when they buy this, whatever they buy, that this is, this is, what our homeowners' association fees are going to be made up of, all of these things per annum divided by the number of owners.
So just to clarify, are we saying that a homeowners' association is required for an open space development?
Yes. It has to be.
Do we make that very clear right upfront in the rules somewhere?
There could be a case.
What's that?
There could be a case where the, the open space, we ended up saying, taking it for a park, as it says in twelve A. So then at that point, the-
Well, that part of it would fall away from homeowners' association, but no matter what,
the building-
There has to be a homeowners' association, because the town, I'm going to tell you right now, the town does not want to have, to take care of more roads,
Right, the developed park.
More stormwater infrastructure, isn't that right, man? And that's one of the, one of the responsibilities of the planning board, if, if the master plan says it and the leaders of the town have always said it, it's our policy. We don't want new to-be-named town roads. We want people to build their own private roads now. So that people who live on those private roads can set up a device that would pay for the maintenance, winter maintenance, summer maintenance, of those roads. So you still need the homeowners' association, but you're right.
The developed-
If the town, if the people take, take the number, number one, it's not one, it's A, twelve A. If they take that, the monitoring and care of the open space falls away from the homeowners' association requirements. Yeah, Robbie, you're right about that.
So we don't, in this Article Six, we don't really mention the rules that this subdivision must have a homeowners' association until we get to that very last section. Am I correct?
No, under, under legal review, this is what I said before, is that there's two places where it talks about homeowners' association. One is under definitions on page two.
Right.
That could be expanded on. It just says that this is what a homeowners' association is.
Because these can be, we've already said these are going to be single-family houses.
Well, the other thing is, is under five D, prior to approval by the planning board. Excuse me, this could be changed too, prior to approval by the planning board. Applicants shall submit for review by the town council. Excuse me. And any deeds, I mean, why would we say any? We would say required deeds, deed restrictions, and required legal documents related to the homeowners' association or any of the legal agreements proposed for use in the open space subdivision, some of which may fall out from your review of an application. I mean, I'm agreeing with you that we could tighten the language up by saying here somehow that we'll say, hey, this is required. I mean, we niggled around it. Right, pretty obvious to me that you've got to have one.
So are we in agreement, this is the board though, about keeping Article Six as opposed to adopting something else? That's one, I don't think we made the, we answered that yet, now that we've talked about it. I'm suggesting we keep Article Six and keep amending it to fit the needs of this town.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Not hearing any, all was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Not that we don't appreciate your work, Bruce, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. I agree with this.
No, I mean, he did a lot of work on this, tightened it up.
We've taken a stab at taking care of the most obvious issues. And again, this is a good start tonight in identifying additional places where tightening up or changing the language would be beneficial. So, I mean, even under, under four G, and we're back to definitions, we're defining open space development subdivision. You could add that to a, with, an alternative form, blah, 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 where homeowners' association is required. Now, that would take care of it, you could further tighten it up by changing D over here. Applicability five D to say the required homeowners' documentation. And I'll do, and I'll take care of that. So can we take up the collection, do I, are you ready, Carter? Sometimes I buy my own ink and sometimes I come to the town with my hat and my hand.
This week?
Any more discussion on this, or do we want to let it sit?
That's enough for Bruce for this week, he's going to be busy.
So I've got like five changes I can make right away from your discussion tonight. But what I'd like to do, and this is up to you for your next meeting, I will look at three of those that I've given you tonight of other, and I will try and cherry pick what I think makes a lot of sense to make our ordinance better. And then I will present that possible changes to you, and then you can talk about whether it's change, change by change. Yes, no, yes, no.
Very good.
Next.
The next discussion is-
John, John has a comment, Mr.-
Yes, John, go ahead, sorry.
I guess, Bruce, I like, I appreciate the three ordinances of other towns, but they seem really light to me. I like our ordinance better, and I'd like to keep adding to our ordinance rather than just adopt the three ones you mentioned, so that's my guidance on that.
And can I just make one comment?
Sure.
I also looked at New Durham, Wakefield, Barrington, and Farmington. And theirs were far more comprehensive than these, but.
Some of those towns, not all of them, I understand, some of those towns have a different paradigm for their community. And at least one of them that you mentioned has a higher population to it.
Agreed, no, I agree.
So really, I tried to pick towns that, population-wise, three to, three to five thousand people, possibly with a, possibly with a village. So that, and with large potential open space development parcels of twelve to twenty acres or more. And so that's, that's why I chose those three, but I could have chosen, shoot, I could have chosen, is that right? I could have chosen many more. I think what I found looking at many of them was that they're all related to the original template, the original model. No matter, no matter how you slice the bread, with the exception of the first one. Because the people in that town want to be different. I may have worked for them at one time.
Oh.
Okay, the next is a discussion for the possible changes to the definition of building heights.
Picking up on our discussion from last time, there were some questions about whether or not that formula for determining the average of the vertical distances to get to the building height was universally accepted or not. I think the answer is that it, that it has been. What we didn't talk about was if there were any other places in the zoning ordinance where the building height was different or not explained, I think Karen could talk about this a little bit more. That was, we were getting into that discussion, I think, when we entered the start, so.
If that was an assignment, I failed, but I believe there's a definition in the shoreline protection section. And that's, I'm just relying on my brain, so.
So. Give me just a moment.
You know, on this building height, it would be advisable to probably get some input from the fire department. The other ones are going to get up there.
Right, but our zoning says thirty-five feet.
Right.
Our zoning right now does not say how you, the-
Equate.
How you calculate the building height. And I think that this, this particular definition will handle that, and it's a good addition. Now, I'm going to look at the shoreline protection article on page fifty-three. I really didn't think there was another place.
And I can do that and get back to you on that.
Well, that's what I know. There are definitions everywhere. So I'm, I'm on page fifty-four in the zoning ordinance. And there is no definition of building height there. There it is, it's on page fifty-six. It's under minimum lot requirements. Here's what it says. "No structure within the Shoreland Overlay District shall exceed two and a half stories or thirty-five feet in height as measured from the average ground level around the structure to the highest point on the roof excluding chimneys." I think we would have to say the same as what this says. Because this is not quite the same. "As measured from the average ground level," well, how do you get to the average ground level? See, we explained this here. It says, "measured as the average of the vertical distances between the ridge of the building and the highest ground level point and the ridge of the building and the lowest ground level point." So that's the average. It doesn't explain how you're doing here, it says average.
Yeah. Larry.
My cape has seven-foot ceilings. Cynthia's house has nine-foot ceilings. Two and a half stories or thirty-five foot below or two.
Well, frankly, whichever is lower needs to be added there. I agree, if you want to take that change on, if you want to take that change on, we'll move forward with a, with a zoning amendment for that too.
So my thought process was to just get rid of that and have building height in our overall definitions, so.
What is the reason why this is in here?
I don't know, that's, that's-
I didn't write it. Obviously, the authority for writing this is four eighty-three P eight. And I'm just, and, and, uh, that's the purpose, maintain safe and healthy conditions, prevention or control of water pollution, maintenance of, protection of, protection of. So the purpose doesn't seem to reflect the requirement for having building height in this particular article, the article.
The only thing I can think of is they wanted to limit the size of a home to two and a half stories around the lake.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we could do with what the fire department has for trucks too.
And that's what, what Brian was getting at, that we should get the fire department's opinion.
I'll talk to the fire department.
But that would also have to go to a law article?
Say, yeah, it has to, so, whatever, any change we make here, I think whatever it was.
Tony?
One other comment to think about with this, I believe this has come up in the past where if you're on a big slope and somebody builds a, a, um, a, um, retaining wall, they could have like a thirty-foot wall and then have the back of a building be ten feet away from that, have a thirty-five-foot height, so basically you've got a sixty-five-foot tall building. How do we, or can we, do anything about that?
So I think, oh, well-
Well, if that was the case, and we're worried about something like that, that retaining wall should be set out thirty feet from the building.
Right.
That way you can get a fire truck to the front of it. And then bring it up to grade level.
That way you can get a fire truck to the front of it, and then that, bring it up to grade level. Then that wall will have to be engineered, because it's probably gonna be over four, six feet, it's gonna be engineered all the way through.
That's just, it's something to consider when, when you come to building height, because it's a way around building.
Everything, everything in this town is like this now, a building.
Right.
Sloped.
Everything that's left, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so Tony, I, I just gotta call your attention, this, this definition is about the height of buildings.
Mm-hmm.
So even though retaining walls are structures, they're not buildings, and there is a difference. Get this right now, all buildings are structures, but all structures are not buildings.
Right, I'm just saying it... If you've got a big slope, someone could build a retaining wall that's even like twenty feet high, and then have a thirty-five-foot building right next to that.
And then a foot or two feet or three feet, so they have a retaining wall.
Right.
And then we've kinda run into this a little.
I know, just wanna bring it up.
Yeah, so you have to determine whether that retaining wall is so close that it's part of the foundation.
Right.
And if that's the case, guess where you, guess where you measure the building height from, or you measure way down there at the bottom, not here, where there's a, where this retaining wall comes up and there might be six inches or a foot of something here, and then the real foundation goes up.
Well, that's what Bruce was saying, um, um, Brian was saying that would have to be thirty feet out, so that you haven't got a, a fire truck.
Yep, and that did come up, and we'll not talk about anything more, but in, in one of the applications that came before, the fire department did say, hey, we don't have a ladder that can help save people that's high enough. And, and obviously, we can't get a ladder truck in this particular locale, so it has to be our fire ladders. So you, so as a planning board, again, I go back to the side of the table, sometimes you can't put into the verbiage of your ordinance every single situation, you need to, every single parcel.
All right, I, I, I just wanted to bring it up as a consideration.
Yeah, I, I'm just, all I'm saying is that I'm underscoring the fact that it's the planning board that has to fact find constantly with any application that comes in. Things like that will always be exposed if you do your fact finding.
Yeah, so apparently, the existing regs in town are thirty-five feet, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so unless you want to change that, I think this is a good way to figure out what thirty-five feet is, so I move, we accept the recommendation as it's presented.
Cause I had something to add, too, I think I brought it up before, I just wanna make sure it's covered, that there should be something in there that it is per, for each building, not an average of the buildings involved. I don't think, does it say, does it specify in there?
It says no building.
No building, yeah.
Cause that's, in the past, I've heard it brought up, well, this one was thirty-seven, but this one was only thirty-two, so...
See, if we put this in, it takes care of that issue, it says no building shall be constructed, not, no, no average of a bunch of buildings on a development.
Okay, we've heard it.
You did have a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any, all who was in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Thank you, Bruce.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Oh, to accept the proposal as, accept the, what's the recommendation?
Yeah, as written.
As written, yes, simple like that.
But that still leaves me with finding out a couple of things, though, about the, about the height of buildings on page fifty-six in the shoreline protection overlay district, and to call the fire department about that, is that correct?
I'm confident that our wishes are gonna prevail, Bruce, I'm not too worried about that. I can't imagine the fire department's gonna say, you know, let's set fifty feet for a building, that's a great idea, you know, I, I think we're cool.
They got a ladder truck now. Okay, next on the agenda is continued discussion on adding language to zoning ordinance Article Three, Section three point five regarding the use of RVs on properties in town. I don't know if anybody's noticed lately, but they're becoming quite popular in front of ads.
I'd like to make a motion to accept that as written, it's pretty, pretty to the point.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I, I just wanna give one special point here, but there are a couple of communities that use this exact language, and it seems to work, and in fact, the only difference, the only difference really is the, is the, uh, unless approval can be obtained from this board, you can do something else, that's what this says. That's not included in the, in the language, and this is an out that lands firmly on the planning board's shoulders, whether the, again, the unique, the unique circumstance of someone coming in and says, uh, I'm building a house, and I, and I can only finance it a little bit of the time, and so I really need to stay in my camper, my RV, uh, for longer than seven days in any ninety-day period. I'm really asking the planning board to allow me to have that while I'm building the house, and I'll be done with the house on such and such a day. And then, you know, you do your fact finding, and then it's up to you whether you approve that or not. Though, that approval then goes into a, a temporary CO for that RV to stay on that lot, so that's, that's what, that's why that part was added. That brings the planning board into the approval process, and it brings the code enforcement officer in, uh, to make sure that the people are held to the approval that you give, if, if you give it.
Then you can turn around and say, while you're doing this, we want to see some kind of progress, give them, like, get your foundation in.
That's, that's right.
The framing up.
That's, and that's the reason why that's in there.
Yeah, right.
So, I get what we're doing here, and I, I fully understand, but I'm just gonna say one thing, I mean, would it be that unreasonable for somebody to come visit somebody for two weeks from a long distance, say, on an RV trip, and want to stay in their yard for two weeks? Is that, I'm just wondering if it's gonna somehow cause the town more of an issue of trying to enforce it only being seven days? Now, I understand what we're going after, and it's not necessarily that.
Are you recommending that? The seven days be changed to a different number of days?
I'm recommending we maybe have a discussion about it, because I don't think it would be that unreasonable if you had family from a long ways away that has an RV, and they come up for maybe a two-week period or something, I don't know. I'm not trying to make it more complicated, but I just don't want...
Thank you. I know where it's gonna get thrown back to.
I mean, seven days is really not that long.
As a discretion of the code officer.
I made this clear to the board at the last meeting when we talked about this, that this is the, this is the time period that's in at least two other ordinances. Is it correct for Milton, does it take into account how things are done today? I don't know. How, how long is an average vacation for someone in an RV to come visit family and sit up in the, in the front yard?
All right.
But this would make it so, they shouldn't.
Someone who is more detailed, uh, detail oriented and vicious than I, uh, can start thinking, we meet on the first and, and third Tuesdays. Uh, if you pick the right month, somebody can come, can come in and try to stay for seven days, and the planning board is never going to meet to approve anything. Uh, and then you have the very, very real honorable campers who have the most up-to-date black water and gray water systems, uh, and, and try to have them pumped ethically, shall we say.
Now we're getting into, now I've gotta go around, as the code officer, let me see your pump receipts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's...
So you tell them the first thing they gotta do is put in a septic system.
Well, that's what this says. And again, if they're, like, these people just say, you're gonna build a house, what's one of the first things they should be required to do? Have that well and septic in, then they're covered.
So is there a better number of days before you vote on this?
I think real, I, I personally think that, not to make more work for you, Brian, but I think it should be left up to, as far as the time period thing, it should be left up to the code enforcement rather than somebody having to come before the planning board. I think it should be, I think, I, I think, honestly, Brian, I think if, if you're out looking, you go and inspect a house that's being built, and you happen to see a camper or an RV parked somewhere, and you see, you, you know that it's been there for more than two or three weeks, or even more than, more than a week, stop in and say, hey, what are you doing? How long you been here, like, what do you plan on doing, or, like, what are you doing, you know?
I, I would do it, definitely need something on this idea to back me up, though, because we have nothing as a...
I, I think, right, I think it should be something along the lines of, of, uh, well, that, I'm, as far as the timeframe, I'm not really sure, but I think it, I think it should be more up to the discretion of the code enforcement.
I think this will eliminate most of the egregious attempts at doing this by having this ordinance in here, enforceable ordinance, if you have a legitimate reason, look, I'm building a house. I can't move into the house, the roof's not on yet. Soon as we get the thing, then we're good to go, you know, and that you have a, a timeframe. Or someone's like, hey, you know what, I got no place to live right now, I'm gonna park my camper here for the next two years.
Exactly, that's what we're, that's what we're working on now.
You cover the ceiling pipe with a rug, that's the problem.
I think some of this...
The same thing, the same thing that Ryan said, somebody's on a long distance trip, how long they plan on staying.
So just asking, or something like that, yeah.
I mean, in reality, if, if the seven, I'm not necessarily saying this, but if the seven days was changed to three weeks, it's still gonna fix the problem we're really trying to fix, because I think the intention for what we're trying to put in here, and it's not gonna cause a burden to say somebody's parents who's coming up for two or three weeks in an RV and wants to just stay in their yard, and it's gonna... I think what we're trying to resolve is the people that are trying to be a year, six months plus.
And that puts the planning board back in the game.
It does, puts the planning board back in the game.
I mean, I, I don't think this is gonna encourage people to live in their campers for three weeks in a yard somewhere if we change it to three weeks, I think what we're trying to, the, the whole point of what we're trying to do here is eliminate the, the three years.
And, and I agree with you, seven days.
And I just think seven days is gonna cost...
And give the code enforcement officer ammunition.
Yeah, but right now, I've got nothing, I'd say thirty days, but yeah.
Or even thirty days.
Yeah, greater than thirty days.
So let me amend my motion and go to fourteen days instead of seven, how's that sound? I don't want relatives a lot younger than that. Fourteen days, and I also like, Bruce, I like this, it applies to the lot, it doesn't mean that after fourteen days, they move it two feet this way, and it's okay again, they set it over, it's, it's on the property fourteen days, and it's out of there, I think it's appropriate. And we've got the, it's, we've got a building permit process, if someone's gonna be on the building with a camper and stuff, that's gonna show up the building permit, you know, Brian knows the people contracts of the buildings, houses, what's going on, right off the bat, you know? So I'm, so again, I make my, I revise my motion to fourteen days instead of seven, how's that? Karen, you wanna go second on that?
I'll second that one.
Any discussion?
I'd like thirty, too.
Okay, we're down, we're, right now I have a motion on the floor, for seven, fourteen days, I have a second. Hold on, all who was in favor? Jonathan?
But I, I can do the thirty, though.
I don't recommend thirty.
How about the three weeks?
You know, maybe there's a hair of Canadian here.
Three weeks?
Thirty and ninety, it seems like a lot to me, but it, but again, see, I've never seen that in my review of other towns.
Yeah.
It's always been seven or fourteen or...
I still think, what are we...
Maybe a little more.
What are we trying to go after, we're trying to go after the long-term...
I think we keep fourteen. You know, if, if they're there fourteen days, and you just so happen to come by, like, yeah, we're actually leaving in two more days, so be it. You know what I mean, you're not gonna kick them out on day fourteen if they're leaving.
There I go, again, a little more tongue digging out of my butt.
So, so the fourteen days is alive.
We have a motion for fourteen days. Mr. Brown?
I, I, I will come back to the, to the three weeks, just in terms of the planning board meeting every two.
I like, I like the twenty-one days as well.
And, and, and that, that can, if...
Nineteen days and five hours.
Get a, get a crack at it.
Sounds like a good old-fashioned auction, do I have some, do I have four, do I have twenty-one, twenty-one? Okay, is that a motion?
I can't make it, I'm, I'm, I'm...
We still have a motion.
Wait a minute, we vote, we were...
Voting, we voted on the seven, we threw that out.
The motion didn't pass.
No, fourteen.
Yeah, the fourteen didn't pass, it was only two.
Fourteen didn't pass, right, so we're announced.
I'll make a motion to change it to twenty-one days.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second? I have a second?
Sure, yes.
Discussion?
So the motion's for twenty-one now?
Twenty-one days, more or less.
No discussion, all who was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Ooh, that was the longest one yet. The best he did was, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Fear.
Everybody did?
We all kind of met in the middle on that one.
Tell the governor, Bruce.
I'll bring back the final language to you.
Okay.
Uh, at least we'll put that one, we'll put that one, the other one to bed, we just haven't had the open issue of the other definition, uh, included by the, and, uh, and the fire department discussion. So, my, my, uh, advice here is that even though you need a, yes, you need to set a public hearing sometime in the future, we should do all three changes together, so we hold one public hearing for each change.
Agreed. Okay, other, other business. I have here the shoreline permit for the boat ramp, if anybody's interested in seeing it, it'll be on the office desk or my desk, or whatever. Yeah. With colored pictures and I read.
So what's the timeline for that, Brian, when do they want to have a, we're applying to the state, and then what's the time, if we can get back to us, or...
Yeah, that, right now, this is, this is all to be, it's an application for the wetlands.
Right, to the state.
To the state.
And then, when you think the state will be back to, do you think we can do construction next summer, for example?
I don't know.
You don't, okay.
This was just sitting on my desk this morning. When they drop, when they drop that off.
I got my copy yesterday.
So, this is just going to the state probably yesterday with the same time. Okay. I have no other business, anybody else?
Action motion to adjourn.
Second.
That was made by Bob, Grant, and Matt, seconded, all who was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congress come on tonight, guys, and gals. So Tony, what are you gonna do next week? What's next after this?
I don't know.
You didn't crash your bike, you...